How are you?
It's Elin Brown. How are you, ma'am?
(laughing). That is yesterday.
(laughing). You kidding? You kidding?
(inaudible).
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 (laughing). That is yesterday.
(laughing). You kidding? You kidding?
(inaudible).
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 Yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes.
Thank you.
Our next item is number three. Item number two is held until June 21st, 2016. Item number three is a resolution approving a special use permit located at 235 Union Avenue containing 1.28 acres in the sports and entertainment district. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. Case number SUP 16-02.
Thank you. Councilman Colvett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Brenda Salamito-Baser, Salamito Land Planning, 2067 Kirby Parkway, Memphis.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to SUP 16-02? Being known, Mr. Chairman, this case was heard, item was heard upstairs, and committee did receive a favorable recommendation. We do have OPD staff on hand, ready to present the case if the council members so wish. Otherwise, I move it to the floor.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Colvett. It's been seconded by Councilman Boyd. Do any council members wish to see a presentation on this item? Or comment on this item? Okay, seen none, please cast your vote for item three.
Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes. Please call item number four.
Item number four is a resolution approving a special use permit located at 195 Union Avenue containing 1.68 acres in the sports and entertainment district. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is SUP 16-03.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present for this case?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Brenda Salamito-Baser, Salamito Land Planning, 2067 Kirby Parkway, Memphis.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to SUP 16-03?
What?
Sir.
This, this is, uh, this is actually the one, oh, never mind. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Correct. 1603. I'm right. Okay, just double checking. There's no opposition. Mr. Chairman, we heard this item upstairs in committee. It did receive favorable recommendation. We do have OPD staff on hand should any of the council members wish to have a presentation. Otherwise, I move it to the floor.
Okay, thank you. It's, uh, sure, it's been moved by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Colvett. Councilman Ford.
Thank you very much. I didn't ask this for the other, and Ms. Salamito already knows what I'm about to ask, so do I even need to ask the question? Are you ready for, to give the answers?
Yes, sir. This application is for a Hilton Garden Inn to be located at the 195 Union, former railway station. It is a seven-story building, 143 rooms. Amenities are restaurant, bar, room service, business center.
Okay.
Meeting room pavilion, indoor swimming pool, fitness center, valet parking, and 24-hour desk service. The rates will be anywhere from $149-
That was my question. There we go.
$229 a night.
And no hourly rates, correct?
That is correct.
And the one that just got voted on wasn't either, right?
That is correct.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you for that big essay answer.
You're welcome.
I just wanted the hourly rates and the other, but thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Much the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ford. Any other council members seeking recognition on this item? Okay, please cast your vote for item four.
Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Ford, Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes. Call the consent agenda.
Item number five is an ordinance up for second reading. Ordinance number 5611 is sponsored by Councilman Spinoza. Item number six is up for second reading. It's ordinance number 5612. It's sponsored by Police Services. Item number seven is an ordinance rezoning the east side of Prescott Road, 733 feet north of Raines Road, containing 5.0 acres in the R8 District up for first reading. This ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. Case number Z16-01, ordinance number 5613. Item number eight is a notation from the Land Use Control Board that the following case was heard and recommendation made requesting a date of public hearing for A case number PD 15-327, Parkside at Shelby Farms Plan Development. That date of public hearing expected to be April 5th, 2016, and addition, April 19th, 2016. And item number 24 on our add-ons up for first reading is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5595, Title 10, Chapters 20 and 40 of the Memphis Municipal Code to revise the definitions of hotel and transient in Section 5-40-5. Funding up for first reading, ordinance number 5614 is sponsored by the Finance Division. I did say April 19th. And to further clarify, item number eight on the, a case number for Shelby Farms, that hearing is April 19th, 2016. Item number eight on our consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, that does conclude our items.
Thank you. That's been moved by Councilman Ford. It's been seconded by Councilman Boyd. Be no council members in the queue. We had one speaker that wanted to speak on item eight, so that you can, you'll be able to speak at the end of the council meeting on that item, although it was held, if you would like to do that. Please cast your votes for the consent agenda.
Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Councilwoman Robinson, yes.
We'll show. Councilwoman Robinson is voting yes also on the fiscal consent agenda.
Fiscal consent agenda. Oh, that was fiscal?
That was our consent agenda. Now we're going to our fiscal consent agenda. Take us to item number nine. A resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $2,640 from the 100 Club of Memphis for the Division of Police Services. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. And item number 10 is a resolution accepting a donation of three Sky Cop camera solutions compatible with existing MPD equipment in the amount of $23,509.14 from the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. This money is being raised by the residents of Hedge Moore Neighborhood. The cameras will be placed at Eastland and Menden Road, Walnut Grove and St. Andrews Fairway, and Goodlett Graham and Menden Road. Through the agreement with Sky Cop, Inc., we will purchase the security surveillance system with a one-year warranty. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda.
Thank you. That's been moved by Councilman Boyd. It's been seconded by Councilman Hedge Pet. Seen no council members in the queue, please cast your vote for the fiscal consent agenda.
Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes. Please call the MLGW fiscal consent.
Item number 11 on our MLGW fiscal consent is a resolution approving change number 18 to contract number 10705, Oracle Software License and Service with Oracle America Corporation in the funded amount of $1,681,412.14. Item number 12 is a resolution awarding contract number 11780, Waste Management Services to Veolia E.S. Technical Solutions, LLC, in the funded amount not to exceed $150,000. Item number 13 is a resolution awarding a contract to Aplobomb Industrial, Inc. for the purchase of a transformer oil purification system in the amount of $414,100. Item number 14 is a resolution approving change number four to contract number 11498, Internet Service Provider with Windstream Communications in the funded amount of $27,600. Item number 15 is a resolution awarding Engineered Ceiling Components, LLC, for submersible pumps in the amount of $219,380. Item number 16, resolution awarding a 36-month contract to Elster American Meter Co., LLC, for gas regulators in the amount of $579,730.88. Item number 17 is a resolution awarding a contract to Universal Scaffold and Equipment, LLC, for water meter bots and lids in the amount of $485,450. And item number 18 is a resolution awarding a 36-month contract to Three Point Graphics for the purchase of utility bill paper in the estimated amount of $280,670.89. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. It's been moved by Councilwoman Robinson and seconded by Councilman Morrison. Seeing no questions, we will now go to the vote on the MLGW fiscal consent agenda. Can you show me voting yes on that item, since I'm away from the chair, Madam Comptroller?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Council members, please cast your vote for the MLGW fiscal consent agenda. Thank you. Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Co-Chairman Ford, yes.
Item passes. Next item.
That will take us to our regular agenda, item number 19, which is dropped.
Yeah, 19 is dropped. Take it to 20.
Item number 20. A resolution requesting the approval of the sale of city-owned surplus property acquired for the use and benefit of the Division of Housing and Community Development by the City of Memphis by warranty deed recorded as instrument KL 1911, located at 2479 Brooklyn in Memphis Shelby County, Tennessee, and further described as parcel 061014001. The amount is $3,000. This resolution is sponsored by General Services.
Councilman Brown.
Chairman, the council has met on this, has met on this item, and it was approved in committee, and I so, well, I've already motioned.
Thank you. It's been seconded by Councilman Boyd. Seeing no questions on this item, we will now go to the vote on item 20. Show me voting yes, Madam Comptroller.
So noted, sir.
Council members, please cast your votes. You have it, please reveal and record it.
Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Vice Chair Ford, yes.
Item passes. Next item. 21.
Item number 21 is a resolution seeking acceptance of three Sky Cop camera solutions compatible with existing MPD equipment. The money is being raised by the residents of River Oaks Neighborhood. The cameras will be placed at Oak River and Massey, Ripple Brook, Ripple Brook and East Shady Grove, and Riverview and East Shady Grove. The amount of the donation is $25,407.16. Through the agreement with Sky Cop, Inc., we will purchase the security surveillance system with a one-year warranty. All three cameras are being donated by the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services.
Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Spinoza. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your vote for item 21.
Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes.
Item number 22 is a resolution accepting grant funds in the amount of $379,738 from Shelby County Government. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services.
Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Been moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Boyd. I don't have any council members in the queue. One quick question. What is this grant for?
Um, can we pull up the resolution? Or do we have somebody from police to explain here? It was asked and discussed in committee two weeks ago, and it was something that was very straightforward. No, no, no. Number 22.
Director Collins, do you know? It's a grant from Shelby County, which is... Item 22. Can we just move this to the heel until we just confirm what this is, who it's from? Okay, please call item 23.
Item number 23 is a resolution authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance schedule to the master lease between Bank of America Public Capital Corp. and the City of Memphis not to exceed $2 million. This authorization extends to the acquisition and delivery of 96-gallon recyclable carts by Solid Waste Management Department to expand its curbside recycling program. This resolution is sponsored by Public Works Division.
Councilman Hedge Pet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Hedge Pet, seconded by-
I can't move it on my screen.
I know.
Oh, we're still on the last voting screen.
Uptown Hedge Pet.
Seconded by Morrison.
Seconded by Morrison.
Go ahead and do a voice vote.
We certainly will. Let's move forward. Councilmember Boyd.
Aye.
Thank you. Brown.
Yes.
Colvett.
Yes.
Ford.
Aye.
Fully Love. Hedge Pet. Jones.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Robinson. Spinoza. Swearengen. Chairman Conrad.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson, would you like to vote yes? Thank you. That item passes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Item passes. Councilman Morgan, do you want to just clarify 22 quickly?
Yeah, half the language was cut off. I believe it's being printed out now by Sam, but it's basically, it was regarding the JAG, uh, yeah, Justice Assistance Grant Program, and... I've got the resolution in front of me, but I don't have the-
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. My only question, I mean, it's for training, Crime Stoppers, equipment, overtime. I was just, it was from Shelby County, but it's basically, it's the US DOJ through Shelby County to us. It just said Shelby County. That's why I was just concerned. So, I think we've got the voting screen up. Any other council members want to speak to item 22? Item 22, accepting, accepting a grant, grant funds? No? Any questions? Okay, voting screen's up on item 22.
That's correct, sir.
So, go ahead and cast your vote. Thank you.
Council members, please cast your vote for item number 22, accepting grant funds. Thank you. Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Hedge Pet, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes. On item 24, this is an ordinance for three readings, but it was supposed to be on consent.
Yeah.
Did you read it? All right. So, we'll go to item 25 then.
Item number 25 is a resolution seeking acceptance for donations of two Sky Cop integrated camera enclosure with two flashing blue lights, MPD Sky Cop logos, two fixed 2.1 MP bullet cameras, DVR with 4TB storage, power and surge protection, 4G LTE embedded SIM card wireless broadband router, one Sky Cop license plate readers with software license for use on Goodway Lane, two MLGW pole permits, and six MPD air cart donation for three years. The cumulative total for the complete donation has an estimated value of $24,592.74 after installation, $8,296.37 for location, West Cherry and Tuckahoe, and $16,296.37 for location, Goodway Lane. The donor is the Memphis Shelby County Law Enforcement Foundation. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services.
Councilman Morgan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and is requesting same night minutes, and I so move.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Boyd. I don't see any other council members in the queue, and any objections to same night minutes? Okay, please cast your vote for item 25.
Boyd, yes. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes.
Our next item is item number 26, a resolution accepting and appropriating an additional $2,400 from the Tennessee Historical Commission for travel, registration, and hotel for five or more Memphis Landmark Commissioners to attend the 2016 National Alliance for Preservation Commissions NIP Act by annual forum. This resolution is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development.
Councilman Colvett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was heard upstairs. It did receive a favorable recommendation. With that, I move it to the floor.
It's been moved by Councilman Colvett, seconded by Councilman Boyd. One question before we cast our votes. I don't see any other council members in the queue. Why was this, I guess, an add-on? Is that...
Mr. Whitehead would like to speak to that, if that's okay?
Josh Whitehead with the Office of Planning Development. It was not supposed to be an add-on. There was some sort of miscommunication between council staff, so it can be delayed by two weeks, or it could be heard.
Okay, thank you.
I move it to the floor, if everybody's ready to vote.
Yeah, I mean, we're, it's been, it's on the floor. It's been seconded. I don't see anybody in the queue, so please cast your vote for item 26.
Boyd, no. Brown, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Jones, yes. Fully Love, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, no. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes. They'll take us to our comment cards.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, may I have just one minute of personal privilege? Thank you very much. I just wanted to enter into the record that today, our city has lost a great citizen. Bill Simmons was originally from Macon, Georgia, but he chose to make Memphis his home after attending Millsaps. He is a longtime, or was a longtime employee of FedEx. He will be remembered as a son, a brother, a fraternity brother, and one of the most decent and general humans I could have ever had the privilege of calling my friend. My prayers are with his family. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Fulllove, before we go to our comment cards, do you have the minutes, same night minutes prepared?
Yes, sir.
Read those, please.
Thank you, mister. Item number 25 is a resolution seeking acceptance of donations of Sky Cop integrated camera enclosure systems with two flashing blue lights, MPD Sky Cop logos, fixed 2.1 MP bullet camera, DVR with 4TB storage, power and surge protection, 4G LTE embedded SIM card wireless broadband router, Sky Cop license plate reader, and so forth, and so on, and so on. Estimated at $24,592.74. Also, installation, $8,296.37, and $16,296.37, and I so move.
Thank you so much. That's been moved by Councilman Fulllove, seconded by Councilman Boyd. Seeing no council members in the queue, please cast your vote for same night minutes.
Boyd, yes. Colvett, yes. Ford, yes. Fully Love, yes. Jones, yes. Morgan, yes. Morrison, yes. Robinson, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swearengen, yes. Chairman Conrad, yes.
Item passes. We'll go to comment cards. For speakers, our first is Lisa Royer, then we have Karen Elliott, and then Janice Jordan.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Royer. I'm at 6523 Patmore Road, and I really wanted to just come in front of y'all today. So, one, you have a face to go with my emails. I appreciate y'all who have acknowledged our emails. We do understand that our case has been held over till April 19th, and correct me if I'm wrong anywhere, because we've been asking a lot of questions. And another clarif- question, sorry, clarification question for myself in our group that's actually opposed. On the day of the hearing, is there any time during your meeting that the people who are opposed, or the homeowners, can actually ask questions and have a discussion, or during the meeting before the hearing, we're just attending and listening?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think any time leading up to, you know, when we hear an item, you can obviously call council members, or, you know, meet with council members, or communicate with them. I think kind of what you've seen here today, there haven't been many items that we've actually debated or had anything contentious, such as two weeks ago, when we voted on Overton Park and the Greenswood. But typically, you know, what we do is a process you've seen today, which is a P&amp;Z case will be presented, and then we'll hear from both sides, and then we'll hear from, you know, folks that want to speak on the, on the issue. Then the council will debate it and make a decision. I'll say that by that time, we've typically had several weeks and several months leading up to that to get informed and to hear from people. So, you know, sometimes there's a lot of debates, sometimes people's-
So, you know, sometimes there's a lot of debates, sometimes people's minds are made up, because they've already heard 95% of it. So, I don't know if that helps, but...
Heard your question.
Oh, would you, no, typically, I'm sorry, so Councilman Morrison clarified your question before, I apologize. Typically, would you be able to ask questions during the council meeting down here?
Are we allowed? Right.
No, I mean, typically, the council is here to hear from both sides and ask questions, but we won't take questions during that debate.
Right, so really, all of our questions need to come before the day of the hearing?
Uh, yes.
Really?
And now, there's plenty of time for that.
Right, right, in between there, because we were directed to bring our concerns at the public hearing. And so, that really is incorrect, because by that time, y'all have really discussed it amongst yourselves.
Not amongst ourselves, but in committee meetings.
Right.
We've met with both sides typically of an issue. Yeah, let me...
This is the park side at Shelby Farms.
So, my suggestion to you would be, is you attempt to find a council member that is willing to champion. Put your list of questions together, give it to that member, and let that member walk those questions through the process to get you the answers. Also, Mr. Whitehead, has he left?
Yes.
Right there.
Oh.
Can you, would you be making sure the staff person is available for questions from the groups that are opposed to this? So, those would be your best avenues.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And the group of homeowners would like to invite y'all to come out anytime to our area, so you can see it firsthand yourselves, before you actually get to your day of discussion, although we are going through emails and everything, but anyone that would like to come out and actually walk the area, so you've got a good idea, we'd be more than welcome to meet with anybody.
Okay, thank you so much.
And you want to show that in writing.
When you want to do that, you send council members, and if someone wants a tour, put your phone number in there. I mean, those are the best ways to do it.
Once y'all get to all your emails, it's already out there. Thank you.
Karen Elliott, then Janice Jordan, then Lisette Talbert.
I'm getting ready to talk like a New Yorker. My name's Karen Elliott. Today, I'm going to compare and contrast...
Ms. Elliott, I'm sorry, too, just, if you could just, also just give us your address, we, kind of one of our protocols, so all the speakers just name and address for the record. Thank you so much.
Okay, 6990 Park Brook Lane. I'm going to, today, I'm going to compare and contrast the intent of planned developments in the Unified Development Code, and how people who live in the area and use Shelby Farms Park view this proposed development. So, from the code, the intent of a special use permit for a planned development is to create a more desirable use of the land, a more coherent and coordinated development, and a better physical environment. The proposed development will not unduly injure or damage the use value and enjoyment of surrounding property, and the site shall be accessible from the proposed street network in the vicinity, which will be adequate to carry the anticipated traffic of the proposed development. That's all in the Unified Development Code. So, these comments I'm going to read to you are from people who have commented on our petition. We have more than 280 comments right now, and counting, more than 700 signatures. My comment is, "Commercializing the edges of the park will utterly change all of the park within view of those developments. Research shows that nature makes people kinder, happier, and more creative. Not bars, quick copy shops, and retail outlets, not traffic jams, not way too many people. This is folly for us and for the future of Memphis and Shelby Farms Park." Susan Hudson from Cordova says, "Our city shows many examples of office park apartment complexes that were short-term boons for developers who did not have a long-term stake in the overall impact of the project on the quality of life of the community. A community master plan should be discussed first before any effort to change the bucolic signature of the area is made." Oh, and she also says, "Land is precious, and the footprint we choose is enduring." Christine Bertsch from Cordova says, "There are plenty of other places developed, but there is only one Shelby Farms Park." Timothy Childs says, "Pressure will be poured on to build a highway through the park." Rita Hilgenhold says, "Without the infrastructure to accommodate the increased traffic, Mullen Station, Farm Road, and Macon Road will turn into a parking lot. Rush hour is already bumper-to-bumper for hours, and I can tell you from personal experience, that is not an exaggeration." That's all.
Thank you so much. Janice Jordan? Talbert, after that.
I'm Janice Jordan. The address is 1111 Celtic Cove. And I also oppose this development, just to keep points that I had. First off, the planned development right now says nine-story. We've been told they would only build a six-story to begin with, and there would be three six-story buildings. And they would possibly do something later, but the plan, if they started construction at the beginning, they still have the approval to do a nine-story, which is very concerning to us, of any multi-story.
Could you just speak a little bit more on the microphone? It's a little hard to hear up here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You can pull it down there.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Yes, nine-story is in the plan, and it could be built as nine-story. It'd be three nine-story buildings on Mullen Station. Also, the land is like a T. You've got your Mullen Station, then you have these three-story apartments that are going to go on through and cross our residential street. So, when we drive through there, we will actually have apartments on the right, apartments on the left, and it would feel like you're driving through an apartment complex. The houses are close to the street. And the other thing, this office of these buildings in the front have apartments, office space, and retail. The office space could be doctor's offices, attorneys, professional services, and all, you know, we don't have the streets to accommodate it. I don't know what the situation is with crossing the green line, but right now, it's our understanding there will be no entrances off of Mullen Station. All these different people who've probably never been to that building can see it from Wilder Grove, go to cross, don't even know how to get in. One entrance, they say, is going to be on Witten. Well, Witten's already backed up. How do you turn on Witten and then make another left when it's bumper-to-bumper traffic? So, I don't, I'm confused whether the county commission has to vote on this. I was told no, and then just a few minutes ago, I was told yes. So, I'm not sure, we'll follow up with that. It seems to us that the, this land is just, maybe they got it a good price, I don't know, I'm an accountant, so I can understand all the business reasons, but it's not... Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, what was your question again? You said you had a, you were confused on something.
If the county has to vote...
If who?
The county commission votes on whether or not they can cross the green line with any entrances to this development.
Josh, do you know the answer to that?
Share this with you. Josh Whitehead with the Office of Planning and Development, again. The CSX Railroad deeded the Green Line Extension. I'm calling it the Green Line Extension, because it's the second phase from where it currently terminates to Shelby County. That deed has language indicating that the, that strip of land, the former railroad right-of-way and future green line, shall not be used for commercial purposes. The county administration, vis-à-vis the county engineer, and emphatically endorsed by the rest of the administration, I should say, interpret that to mean absolutely no crossing other than a bicycle or pedestrian crossing. So, there has been discussion by the applicant that he would appeal that determination to the county commission. I believe there is a, there's plans in the works by the county attorney's office to determine if that's even appeal-able or not. What does that mean to this body? Well, if we proceed on April 19th without that issue being adjudicated and having some sort of finality there, that will greatly affect y'all's vote on this, because instead of having two access points onto Witten, two access points onto Mullen Station, it will have zero access points vehicular, at least, onto Mullen Station, which I think would exacerbate Ms. Jordan's comment about access onto Patmore and breezy, the B Street that's also behind the development.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jordan, thanks for that, great question. And Councilman Colvet, maybe this is something that we just need to think about in the next couple of weeks, and maybe they need to take this on before it comes to us, because it seems like we'd be voting on something that's a bit half-baked. Hold on one second. Go ahead, Councilman Colvet.
To that end, I've asked the applicant and the folks that are potential opposition to have one more meeting publicly, to go through their concerns, and ask them to email me, copying me on their concerns, so that we can get the applicant's responses to that. Also, following up on the county commission's questions as regards to Green Line.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Lisette Talbert, then Dennis Lynch.
Hello, my name is Lisette Talbert. I live at 1109 Cambrian Drive in Memphis, Tennessee, at 3134. I'm in the area, half a block where this park side at Shelby Farms is to take, supposedly take place. I'm in opposition, resounding opposition, and I'm echoing what my neighbors have been saying. We don't want it to be rezoned. The area is for single-family homes, not high-rise buildings. This would change all dynamics. I built my home from the ground up, because I wanted the serenity of that area, and that will change everything. So, once again, I'm just resounding what my neighbors have said, the ones that can't be here, because they have to stay at work, and the ones who just spoke before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Dennis Lynch, 347 North McLean, in midtown Memphis. I am speaking about the park side development. Obviously, I live in midtown, not near the neighborhood, but I'm with the Sierra Club, and I'm very involved with paying attention to things related to Shelby Farms Park. I also have a personal and professional career experience in transportation planning, and specifically in forecasting is one element of that. So, I have written an email, I've sent to all of you. I've spoken with Manny Bailin, the acting city engineer. I also spoke briefly with Ms. Solomito, and she's agreed to meet with me. I have a number of concerns about the traffic study. There is a requirement related to the project that there be a traffic study. There's a lot of complexities to it. Josh Whitehead didn't talk about the traffic study, but he pointed out the fact that there's some openings, or entrances and exits from the development that may or may not be there. So, the traffic study needs to make sure to consider that. You're going to have either with the Shelby Farms Parkway, or not with the Shelby Farms Parkway. You're going to have with an entrance onto Mullen Station Road, or without an entrance on Mullen Station Road. That gives you four different scenarios that need to be analyzed. So, it's a complex study, and I don't think the consultants have really wrapped their minds around all that's involved in that. And I'm going to do the level best that I can to make sure that they do a serious, careful, thorough job in their traffic planning, because obviously, it could be a huge mess out there if they have 1,350 apartments, 60,000 square feet of, I forget, 60,000 square feet of retail, and 80,000 square feet of offices, or something like that. Anyhow, a lot of traffic, and this traffic study needs to be thoroughly and carefully done, and I hope you all insist on that before...
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mr. Yahweh? Mr. Yahweh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Minister Kurey Yahweh, 870 East McLemore. Operation Safe Environmental Awareness. What you have before you is a breakdown of the illness, the illness that's a result from this, from this hazardous waste poison, it's a poisoning that you're putting into the drinking water. And I explained over a period of time that this is a lie, which in fact, that brought the fluoride into play in the beginning. It was put together by Dr. Gerald Cox from the Melon Institution, and the Melon Institution came into existence by melon, who in fact, it was part of the alkohol who needed somewhere to dump the waste, because it was too expensive. Now, we then come to the conclusion that it was a lie, because Cox told them, said, well, let's tell them that we'll put it in the water to stop them from having truth decay. That was a lie. Okay, so now, now, look what's happening with the lie. We got cancer, and this is something you ought to be seriously concerned about. It causes aging, this fluoride poison does. It causes babies to have serious brain problems. It attacks the cellular structure. It attacks the, it attacks the pancreas. It attacks the thyroid. It attacks the mental and physical problems. It's nothing but an illness and a lie. And I'm hoping that this body, because the EPA will be in town next month, I've already, the governor know, the state know, everybody know, and everybody got y'all's letter that I gave to you in January. Everybody know. So, I'm saying that we in fact can solve this. There is no value to it whatsoever. Please, no value to this garbage. Please, stop endangering the health of the people, and we'll be, we're pleased with your people. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yahweh. Lee Cochran?
Okay, I'm Lee Cochran at 179 Rich Briar Street, and I just want to give the alternative media report. I don't know if you know this, but corporations own, five or six corporations own about 90% of the media, so they leave out a lot of important stuff. And I would like to encourage each of y'all to listen to 1600 AM, Monday through Friday, 7 to 9. It's Joyce Riley in the Power Hour, and she tells you a lot of things about the truth, about vaccines, how the voting machines could be hacked, and a whole bunch of other things. And I would just, and exposes the global, the one-world global government experience, I mean, agenda. And I'd just like to remind you that y'all serve the people and not the special interests. All right, thanks. Bye.
Thanks. Walter Brody? One second, Walter Brody. Councilman Ford?
Real quick, before we have our customary benediction, Councilwoman Robinson and I are having a community meeting on Monday, and it's at Councilwoman Robinson's church. Let me get that address again. It is Faith Temple Ministries Church of God in Christ, 5191 Elvis Presley Boulevard. It starts at 5:30 to 7:30. Council members are welcome, and anybody that's listening, thank you. Faith Temple Ministries Church of God in Christ, 5191 Elvis Presley Boulevard. Need to zip to? What's it, 116?
Okay, Walter Brody.
I'll just give you one of these.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman Ford.
Yes, my name is Walter Brody. Stand 4256 Lebetta Co., Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. Just going to prayer. And to follow, I want to thank you. Thank you for everything. Father God, continue to bless all the city council members. Father God, continue to give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Father God, continue to bless all their family members. Father God, continue to bless all the people who's behind the scenes, who's working real hard, Father God. Father God, bless the sergeant in arms. Bless all the policemen, Father God, and the firemen. Father God, bless all the doctors and nurses. Father God, bless our mayor, both our mayors. Father God, bless Shelby County Commission. Bless all the teachers and students, Father God. Bless every man, woman, child in this city, this state, this country, and all around the world, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you, God.
We're adjourned. Thank you.